Meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. My name is Councillor Argenzio and I chair this committee. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items that contain exempt information. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today, there was one just before the meeting. So if there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is to the square. I would like to remind everyone attending and speaking today that we are in the pre-election restriction period. This means that the council has to be especially aware of its legal duty not to publish any material that might be seen to favour a candidate or party in the election. There is also a requirement to ensure government policy is presented in a balanced and even-handed way. Publicity is given a wide meaning and includes matters said in council-hosted meetings. I therefore require everyone speaking today to confine their questions and comments to those strictly necessary to conduct the business on the agenda and not to stray to incidental or related matters that might breach the publicity restrictions. In addition, public questions and petition and member questions are not permitted during the pre-election period. Please could I ask each member of the committee to introduce themselves? But before I do that, actually, can I pass on to Robert, who's our legal person today, to just add to that, just to explain?
Thank you Chair, good morning, Commissioner Robert Parkin, Assistant Director for Legal Services. I just wanted to resonate and amplify the points made about the heightened sensitivity period in which we are meeting today. Chair has run through the importance of the need to be objective, even-handed, and also to be reflective in the points made. The watchword is to avoid making points, comments that are designed to influence voters specifically. So naturally by examining the papers and considering them on the merits and on the officers' points made, one would hope that doesn't arise, but if members could be conscious of the need to reflect on when giving speeches, to avoid saying things which could be interpreted as seeking to influence voters. Thank you Chair.
Thanks, Robert. Could I ask colleagues to introduce themselves? I'll start on my left here.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Ruth Nelson, I represent Crookston Crossford Ward.
Councillor Owen McLean, I'm spokesperson for this committee and I represent Walkley Ward.
Councillor Matt Dwyer, I represent Burley Ward.
Good morning, Councillor Julie Grokert, I represent Stockbridge and Upper Don Ward.
Morning, apologies for being late, been stuck in a bit of traffic. Councillor Sophie Thornton for Beechif and Greenall Ward and Deputy Chair of the Policy Committee.
You're in offices. Alexis, do you want to start?
Sherry Grant, Assistant Director, Legal Services.
Have you already heard from me, Robert Parkin, Legal Services?
Alexis, do you want to introduce yourself again?
Apologies to all. Alexis Chapel, Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Rachel Marshall, and I'm Principal Democratic Services Officer.
And we have Alan, who does all the tech for us, very important. So our next item on the agenda is apologies for absence. I've received apologies from Councillor William Sapwell and Councillor Mick Rooney. Are there any other apologies?
There should be apologies from Councillor Steve Ares, if he's not sent them.
As said before, there are no public questions or petitions allowed in this meeting. And Item Six, Members' Questions, also, those are not on. So Item Six on the agenda, sorry, Item Three on the agenda is declarations of interest. This is different to my thing, it's confusing me. Item Three, declarations of interest, are there any members that wish to declare an interest? Councillor Grokert.
Thank you Chair, can I declare an interest please on Agenda Item 13 in relation to home care? I'm in the process of going through that procedure with a family member. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Grokert. Those are noted. Minutes of previous meetings, these are on page 11 of the pack. There are two sets of minutes, one set is from our March meeting. So do members agree that these are a correct record of the meeting? I'm going to go page by page because I need to initial them. So on page, I assume it's 11 on the pack, sorry. So on the first page of that one, and the second page, and then page 13, 14. Councillor?
While we go to page 13 in our pack, it goes on to the work programme. So we've just got the minutes from the meeting on the 15th of May, we haven't got any other minutes in our pack.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, can we put these back to next meeting then, if members haven't had them? Apologies, I have like three sets of things in front of me. So let's just do the minutes of the 15th of May, which was the AGM. So on page 11, so do we agree that these are the correct version? So page 11 and page 12, I assume. So Rachel, will you comment about the fact that we've not approved those minutes yet? Thank you, thank you so much. Item Five on the agenda is the appointments to subcommittees. So we just need to note this. So to note that on the 13th of May 2024, the monitoring officer, in consultation with a relevant political group, WIP, has authorised the appointment of Councillor Mary Lee as a substitute member for the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. And on the 7th of June 2024, the monitor officer, in consultation with a relevant political group, WIP, has authorised the appointment of Councillor Julie Grokert to the member of vacancy of the Health Scrutiny Subcommittee. Are members happy to note and agree to those? Thank you. Work Programme, this is on page 13 of your pack. As usual, the work programme is a work in progress because things get added and moved about during the year. And I'm just going to ask for members to kind of note it in a way. So the recommendations are on page 12, 14, sorry. That committee work programme, a set in Appendix One, be agreed, including any addition and amendments identified in Part One. That consideration be given to further additional adjustment to the work programme presenting in Part Two of Appendix One. That member give consideration to any further issue to be explored by officer for inclusion in Appendix Two, Part Two of Appendix One of the next work programme report, for potential addition to the work programme. And if items are referred from lax, this should be highlighted to the Principal Democratic Service Officer to ensure they are dealt with appropriately. Members happy to approve those? Brilliant. And then I suggest that in next meeting, maybe we go a bit more in-depth with work programme. If people want to make any comments on it, we can do that then. Thank you. So we move on to the reports in the more formal reports in the pack. So we go on to Item Seven, which is on page 27 of the pack, is the Hospital Discharge and Urgent Care Delivery Plan Update Report. We have Alexis, Ian, and someone else is going to enter, and Sarah. If you could introduce yourselves when you start, and thank you.
So my name's Alexis Chapel, Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Sarah Farahut and I am the System Discharge Lead for Sheffield, which is a partnership post working across both health and social care.
Good morning colleagues. Ian Atkinson, Deputy Place Director within the Sheffield Place team of NHS South Yorkshire ICB. My role within the system is a joint senior responsible officer for discharge from an NHS perspective.
So I'm going to open and then I'm going to hand over to my colleagues. So we are delighted to present the discharge report today. This represents an update to committee on our progress and meeting our local ambitions. And before I hand over to Sarah and to Ian, I just want to actually do two things. Number one is to note a thanks to all the team across social care, health and care providers and VCSE, who on a day-to-day basis have been involved in supporting people to be discharged home when they are well. And the combined efforts of our collective team to realise our ambitions. And I think I just want to note that first of all, because I know there's a huge amount of effort that goes on between our teams and really good joint working locally to do that. So I want to kind of note that. And then the second thing is I wanted to highlight in the report is actually we're supporting unpaid carers. We have made a commitment to make discharge personal locally in Sheffield. And I think this is particularly important because actually last week was carers' week. And we have, as part of our ambitions, have very much tried to support unpaid carers. And I just want to draw that out for members also. And I think that's particularly important within this agenda because often it's unpaid carers that are the ones who are very much supporting people through what can be quite difficult times. So that's it. So I'm going to hand over to colleagues.
Can I just comment before Sarah comes in, if that's okay Chair? So just briefly, it's a reminder to members that this time last year, it's exactly 12 months since we came to present and getting support from members for our discharge improvement strategy across the Sheffield Place. I think it's going through a second challenging winter on discharge. I think it's really important, as Alexis says, just to acknowledge the thanks to all staff and partners across the system. Hopefully we're going to demonstrate through this discussion today and take questions in terms of that improvement journey we are on. We are absolutely keen to stress that this was a journey that we described over a two to three-year programme, not just a six to 12-month one, Chair. So thank you for just allowing me to say that.
Okay, so it's over to me. Thank you, everybody. So in terms of this paper that you've got, there's obviously some of it's for update and we'll go through some of the detail of that. But it does also have a request around extension of what we call somewhere to assess beds. So they are beds that are made available, residential and nursing home beds, that are made available for people when they're discharged from hospital for a temporary period of time and the contractor just coming to it. So there's a formal request within that. Obviously, the programme's been running now for 12 months. I've been here since the middle of March. So the first thing to tell you is you now have a system lead in place, which is in line with the National Hospital Discharge Policy. And my role is to do that strategic approach across health and social care in order to make sure that we are doing things together more formally and actually alongside Ian and Alexis and Michael from the hospital, just to make sure that there's some capacity in there to make sure that discharge is a priority. So we've now recruited that post, is the first thing. In terms of where we'd like to try and get to improvements. Currently, people who are in hospital when they don't need to be there, and it's called the national languages discharge ready. Generally, that's about 17% for us in Sheffield, which is higher than we'd like. And we're aiming on a trajectory to get that down to 13% by the end of March, in terms of some of the things we do. We're making good progress against that. So the last figures we had got us down to just under 15%. So it's already starting to come down significantly. It will go up in winter because there will be that fluctuation, but we will try and do it. And in terms of the steps that we're putting in place to manage that through the programme, they are the right steps to make sure they are happening. They are the ones that are nationally recognised as being best practice. So we'll just run through some of those. Just to give members a flavour, if we wanted to be sort of the best in the country, we'd be looking at around about 10%. Because there's always going to be some people. It does take a while to plan it, particularly when people have had a period of being unwell. The other thing that's really important to pull out of hospital discharge, because it's really difficult for people to understand sometimes, is criteria resides. It means that you need an acute hospital bed. Just because you're discharge ready, it doesn't mean you're very well. And that's a very difficult message sometimes to have with people and particularly with carers. Your loved one may look unwell still, but they do not need to be in hospital, they can recover at home. And that's obviously a very difficult message to have and a discussion to have with people. But it's just to remember that discharge ready doesn't mean you're better. Unfortunately, you don't come out of hospital feeling better. In fact, you often don't feel better until you're out of hospital. So just in terms of the things that we're doing. So in Sheffield, we do really, really well at getting people straight home from hospital. There's nationally a big fix on people are better off in residential nursing care than they are in hospital. And yes, they are, but they're actually far better off if they can get them home with the right support. And in Sheffield, we do really well against that. So the national target for that is 91% of people going straight home. And that's people that just go home because they've had an operation or intervention and they don't need any support. But also people that go home with care and support. And in Sheffield, if you look at the trajectory, traditionally and consistently above 95%. So we're getting 95% of people straight home from hospital. That's a really good thing to do and we are ahead of where actually people think we should be. We are also doing better on getting people home with what we call rehabilitation. So when people leave hospital, they often need a bit of time to recover. And you say people often need an opportunity to have rehabilitation, recovery or rehabilitation. That idea will get better and we're doing better in terms of our approach on that. In terms of how we're actually going to make the difference, in terms of the steps we're taking. The first one is we are currently working on, and it will be delivered by the beginning of July, our first version of a single version of the Truth Digital System. And what that will do is bring together a place that pulls NHS acute hospital data to start with into a place that everyone can see and can see it and enter into it. We will then expand that to think about how we bring in local authority data, community health data and eventually mental health data. So we've actually started that journey. The tool is being built. It's going out for testing with the team this week to socialise it. So we've moved that on pretty quickly in terms of, we started this work about the middle of March. So actually we've got something very quick stood up in terms of supporting the work that we're doing. So that's a big step forward for us in terms of understanding our data and understanding what we're doing together. We are also implementing a care transfer hub. This is again something that's recognised as national best practice. We already have teams in the system that are working really hard to get people out of hospital. We have hospital social work teams, we have community health teams and we have internal teaching hospital teams. But they kind of rub along together. What a care transfer hub does is bring those people together to have a conversation around the person. So it puts the person back in the centre of that. It's a slightly different way of doing things rather than people doing things differently. So there's a change to do that we need to do in a steady way so that it works for people and so they feel comfortable with the journey. So we're starting with a few wards. We started that in the middle of May. We're already seeing that people are getting home more quickly than they were in those wards beforehand. And that's as a result of things like we're planning with people while they're still in their acute phase or before they're discharge ready. So where we need to do things to make sure they can go home, we're doing those before they're ready to go home. We're having earlier conversations with families, earlier conversations with care providers and early conversations with obviously the people themselves around what those discharge patterns might look like. And we're changing some of the structures of how we get people out of hospital to try and help people get home in a more timely manner. Obviously, for some people, they do need a bit longer, but you know, people shouldn't be waiting as long because we are not as organised, I guess, in terms of how we do things. So we're starting to see some minroads and we need to think about how we make that the main scale model, ideally for winter. It might be still in progress in winter, but that's what we'd like to get to. When we are getting people out of hospital, we want to get people home. The language around hospital discharge is sometimes very complex. But we say if people are just get up and go home with a family member, it's called Pathway Zero. If they just go out, same as they went here, we call it Pathway Zero. If we think someone needs support to go home, we call it Pathway One. And for our Pathway One, we have some good services in place which are delivered by health and social care. And we fund those to be free at the point of delivery for people leaving hospital under what's called discharge to assess. But we still do an awful lot of assessment in hospital, which means people don't get home as quickly as we'd like. So what we're doing is tweaking that model and changing it and saying we want to go to something called describe, not prescribe. So rather than looking at a person who's in a hospital bed and saying they're going to need four care calls a day to go home and then thinking we need to wait for four care calls before we can get them home. We say actually, we're not quite sure what you're going to need. We're going to take you home, assess you there, and then if you need four calls, we'll put them in. If you need two calls, we'll put them in. So it means we're not waiting for care capacity to get people home. There's a safety netting around that in terms of what you do if somebody needs more care than you've got. But actually generally, we've got a reasonable amount of care capacity we could pull on in an emergency if somebody does need more than is available. So we're just trialling that out and do something different. By reducing those assessments in hospital, you know, you have two or three days of assessment in hospital and then you can have however long it takes to get out. That might be another three or four days before the capacity's available. And then you get the person home and they didn't need any of that because they're used to furniture walking and tripping over their own carpet because it's their environment, they're really comfortable with it and they're not in an unfamiliar environment, you know, in their nightgown. So they're much more confident in their own environment and they manage very differently. So we're changing the way we assess people to try and help more people get home more quickly. But also, if you take a person home to understand their needs, you'll put the right support in for them. If a person or potentially their family member hears from a doctor or a nurse that this person is going to need four calls a day, if they don't need that, it's very difficult to say when you get a person home and they don't need that. Which means we're potentially over prescribing care, which causes us problems in terms of our overall care capacity. So it allows us to right-size care in a better way. In terms of people who do need to go into a bed, and for us, that is a small number of people. And we're on track for sort of 5% of people going into beds in terms of the numbers. But the split of that, you should be looking at, and it should be over 65s only, so it shouldn't be 5% of everybody. So there is a little bit of work we could do with that. 4% of those people should be going to something called a Pathway Two bed. And what that means is they should have had active support within that bed to help them to recover to a stage where ideally they could go home. Or if they can't go home at that stage, then we go on to long-term residential care. Only 1% of people should be going into what is potentially long-term residential nursing care for the first time from hospital. We don't quite have that balance right. Although we have beds that we buy in nursing and residential care under somewhere to assess. Actually, the person goes there, they will have a follow-up care act assessment at the right point or a continuing healthcare assessment if they need. But in the meantime, there's nobody actively saying what is it you need at home? Can you get out of bed? Can you make yourself a cup of tea? Are those things that you can do for yourself that would help you to get home? So most of those people will by default end up in long-term residential care. So we need to just change our modelling slightly so that what we do is offer more of that enabling Pathway Two provision and less of that Pathway Three provision within the same probably number of beds, possibly slightly less, because we might get more throughput. Which means we need to do something slightly different about how we wrap around. We need to think about an intermediate care supportive service to wrap around those people. And we do have some of that. We have some Pathway Two beds. They are delivered by Sheffield Teaching Hospital. They're quite traditional in terms of physical health rehabilitation things. So actually where somebody's broken their hip or had a mild stroke, they're focusing very much on that physical intervention. But actually, if you think about the needs of people, we often have people where they have the start of dementia. They need to think about how they're orientating themselves in their home. We need to think about what their mental health is post-Covid and how we can support carers to carry on and deliver that service. And actually, it's a different type of intervention that they need. It's not necessarily actually we need to get you walking five steps. Actually, what we need to do is think about, do you need more technology in your home? What do we do if you do wander off in the middle of the night? Have we got things like the Herbert Protocol and other protocols in around keeping you safe? And actually, what can we do to support your son or daughter who is working full-time and is also a grandparent themselves and trying to look after you and has been doing everything on their own? And how do we wrap around? So it's a different type of intervention that we need in those Pathway Two beds to help those people actually be able to return home. Sorry, I'll move on, I'm going on a bit. And then the final thing is just about pulling into mental health. So there is a separate mental health discharge programme. It's part of the same work, but they're sort of separate. And actually, what we want to do is try and bring those together. We have had a peer challenge from the Local Government Association on the 7th of June, who's had a look at not just hospital discharge for mental health, but looked wider at mental health. But the recommendations on discharge are things like, actually, you would benefit from offering discharge to assess out of mental health hospitals. Because actually, that's what you do at physical health hospitals. That we need to do earlier planning for people in hospital around some of the complexities of the mental health act. And that actually to do that, if you use the Care Transfer Hub model, that's a really good model of doing it. So some of the stuff that's coming out, particularly around hospital discharge from that review, say you should be doing the same thing. And what we know is that a lot of people who are struggling to get out of acute hospitals have mental health issues. And some of our people who are in mental health hospitals have physical health issues. So if we have the same set of services with a shared workforce that has the right competencies and skills to support people across the board, then actually what we'll do is be doing a better delivery for our system. And Alexis, so we just talked about carers. So I think that's it from me, unless there's anything else that members would like to ask.
Are there any questions? Councillor Grokert?
Thanks for the report and I think it all sounds really positive and it's really good and we're moving in the right direction. And so thank you for that and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. Just a couple of points from me when we're talking about people being discharge-ready to go home. And it's just understanding how long those people are waiting before we actually get them out. Is it only a few days? Is it a few weeks? How long are they waiting? And what's the cause of that? Is it just capacity in terms of staff? Is it about training? What's the issue that's holding that up and how are we trying to sort of unpick that? So that we can then get on with all the planning of all the other stuff that you've talked about. And I also just a comment, I suppose it's about trying to understand then. I think you mentioned it quite eloquently about the patients being discharge-ready. And then I like the idea of people having the assessment at home because I think that's the best and most suitable place for them to have that. But how do you balance the making sure that they are discharge-ready at that point while getting the assessment done in the home? I suppose that's just a bit, just have some clarity about how you make sure you've got those bits right. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start with that last one because I think it's one of the biggest issues that people have of how do you take somebody home without knowing what they want and knowing they're going to be safe? And it is a real worry for people. And what we have done as part of that is we've ring-fenced an intermediate care bed. So if we get somebody home and they're really not safe, we will be stepping up to that intermediate care bed. That is our backup safety. If for some reason that is false, we would bring them back to hospital. That person wouldn't have gone home on that day anyway. So you know, we don't see that necessarily as a failed discharge. It's not what we want to do. But we wouldn't leave somebody in an unsafe position. That being said, we've been doing this now for about four weeks, so it's still early doors and a very small cohort of people. Nobody's used that intermediate care bed yet. Because what we have is very good community services who actually do an awful lot of work to keep people out of hospital, who are very good at keeping people at home and very creative around how they do it. And actually, it's often, even if you've got there and a person couldn't manage because, you know, we're concerned they needed a bed downstairs or whatever, or they couldn't get in and out of the bath. There are often times you can bridge that with some things. Sometimes you might have to set people off for a couple of days. But if it's a case of actually, we think this person's going to need four calls a day and we can only put in three, but we know that actually at the end of this week, we can put the fourth in. Families will often say, yeah, don't take them back to hospital. We'll cover that a little bit because they know there's an end date, they know there's something coming. And actually, that's okay. As we start to get more ambitious, because it meant we're sending people home in that way, and we've got a load of capacity still, we're not a load of capacity, but we have enough capacity. The services haven't stopped ring-fencing capacity. They've just made sure because we've got these slots, it's there. So we haven't had enough capacity. Where I've done this in other areas, we did it because there wasn't capacity. But we will start to move to what else can we do? So there are things we can do as we come into winter about wrapping around differently and thinking about what we can do around things like our advice GP services, what we can do around our voluntary sector in terms of some things that they might be able to do and how we can wrap around those things. So as we get more confident with doing it, we can start to think about doing things differently. So that's that one. In terms of why people are in hospital and how long they're in hospital for after they are discharge-ready, some of our data isn't as good as it could be on that. So I think we just need to be upfront about that. And part of the reason we want the digital discharge tool is it will help us plan together. Some people get home really, really quickly. If all you need is to go home with a family member or all you need is a package of care restarting, they'll generally go home the same day or next day, depending on some of the internal processes, like making sure your discharge letter's ready and your medication's there. And everyone that's been through our hospital system, and this isn't the Sheffield thing, knows every way you spend all day waiting for medication. You just do. And that's not unique to Sheffield. You just do. And that's not unique to Sheffield. If what you need is a more, you need some support at home. We do have some capacity gaps in our services, which is less about the service capacity that we've got. It's more about getting people off the other end. People get stuck at the other end. It's about how we get them onto long-term care. And some of that's been affected by the fact we've been retending our care home contract. So we were hoping that will settle. The things that really challenge people are where they need something outside of the ordinary. So where a person, we get a lot of people who've come into hospital where their houses have been neglected. So things have been going wrong for a while. And actually, we need to make sure, we need to help them get the house into a fit state before they go home. Now, if we know that when they're admitted, we can arrange that. If we don't know that until the day they're discharge-ready, they could be waiting a week, 10 days, two weeks for that to happen. So this is where the early discharge plan will start to help with some of that. And there's also something to think about, not necessarily about hospital discharge, but about our preventative work. How do we get in earlier and help people so they don't get themselves into that situation? And how do we make sure that we can support people with that? The other thing is where people actually haven't got houses. So where things have been breaking down for a while for them at home. And again, this comes up prevention. So actually, people potentially could be in a homeless route. And if they've got care and support needs, or if they've not necessarily got long-term care and support needs, but they're not very well. It's very difficult to say you present as homeless. And we don't have sufficient supported accommodation that's not residential nursing care for people and particularly for younger people. And again, that's not a Sheffield situation. And one of the things coming into Sheffield compared to areas where it's a separated housing and adult social care function is more challenging. At least in Sheffield, we've got those things together. We're at, you know, city council. And then the final thing is mental health. So people, there's lots of increase in mental health in the system, particularly post-COVID. And actually, how you support a person who doesn't need care and support in terms of washing, dressing, meal prep, in and out of bed. What they actually need is somebody to stop them feeling anxious, to help around things like drinking, making sure that they're taking medication. So those sort of other, from a social care perspective, low-level stuff, but actually really quite complex. So they're the things that really slows down. And then we do have a delay getting new people into beds because actually you need a trusted assessment and then the care home will accept them. So actually, beds is not a great option for people because actually that's the longest pathway out of the supportive pathways anyway.
Thank you, Sarah. I have Councilwoman Milton and Councilwoman Dwyer.
Thank you, Chair. About your role, Sarah, I feel kind of, I'm speaking from a place of ignorance. But I feel kind of instinctively glad that the role is hosted by the council rather than by the NHS. Because, you know, the continuing care of the person is kind of more than half the story, it seems to me. So I wonder how the relationship for you with our NHS partners feels at the moment? And whether there's any challenges or particular successes already in that for you? And then I also wanted to ask about unpaid carers because, I mean, this whole committee's long recognised how important unpaid carers are in the system. And it's, you know, it's been a priority for us to support unpaid carers more. And I just wondered about the Sheffield Carers Centre, whether capacity is sufficient there or whether that's something that is going to need looking at sooner rather than later.
Great. I'll start on that and I might hand to next.
Sorry, can I ask Councilwoman Dwyer to also ask his question and then you can answer all of that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the work on this. I had a question on the quality impact assessment highlighting unpaid carers, but Councilwoman Milton has already covered. The report notes that there was issues recruiting the transfer care hub manager. Can you go into a bit more by that? And then also the wards that were selected for the pilot scheme? Is there a chance that those would impact, the kinds of wards that yours were would impact scaling this up further?
Okay, I'll try. I might hand some of the carer stuff over to Eximit. But just in terms of, my wrong, so this is a nationally recognised role. It has, it's quite an odd one. It is one I've done before. You have, I have the joyous responsibility of being accountable to health and social care and holding health and social care accountable for discharge. So it's a dual role. So I have equal part challenge and accountability in that role. And it is interesting. It shouldn't matter and it doesn't matter which partner holds that post. It is about that account, you are separate, you do sit out. I don't have, although I will be managing the transfer of care hub, okay, transfer hub. I don't have line, I don't have operational teams. I don't attend, I don't attend DLT. I don't attend whatever the equivalent is in the trust unless I'm invited to. I'm not part of the operational management of each service, although I sit in the management structures. In terms of the particular question, this is the second time since I started on the, in the middle of March. I have actually been on-site at the council. I am at the hospital twice a week. I only do three days. So I'm at hospital twice a week most weeks. So I spend most of my time on-site with NHS. I have an adult social care background. And therefore, it's incredibly important that I have credibility in the health space. I think I have. I guess you'd have to ask the partners, but nobody's told me I haven't. And nobody's fed back that anybody else has, I haven't yet in terms of that space. Sorry.
Yeah, do you want to add to that?
Just to add to that, Councilwoman Milton, I think there's a couple of things for members just to note. When we brought the plan through last year, with all the kind of, we want to move to discharge to assess. We think people should be in their own home. We were really committed, myself, Alexis and colleagues, that this was a joint plan for the Sheffield place that we all sign up to. And in order to do that, through my lens, it's all right putting it on a piece of paper, but actually, there's a culture change. There's a commitment to joint working. And actually, some of the, well, Sarah's role being one example. But when we're talking around the transfer of care hub manager and other things that we're now doing in that space, to me, gives me assurance that we are still driving down that one plan and we'll continue to review it. And we will kind of make adjustments to that plan over the period. But that's a different position to what we were in 18 months ago as a place. So I just wanted to kind of furnish it in the wider context of the fact that we've got this post. It is hugely, it should be hugely beneficial and should break down barriers across organisations. And it's the culture that we're collectively trying to nurture across this pathway of dialogue, across all elements of the urgent care. Start from the front to end. Thank you.
Just to answer a couple of questions here in terms of both the post and also unpaid carers is we have, what's been really important, I think, to us locally in Sheffield is the good relationships that we've got between ourselves and the trusts and the ICB. And actually, we've really worked hard to go and develop these really good relationships between us, you know, at executive level and also at an operational level. And actually, what's really quite helpful about Sarah's post is actually there's a joint leadership between ourselves and Sheffield Teaching Hospitals, which I think is really, really helpful because actually what this also does is consolidates that joint working, particularly between us as organisations. And already, I think, within the first, you know, few months of Sarah being in post, but also actually really implementing the plan. What we're actually seeing is the momentum for change and actually driving forward the local ambitions that we are taking forward. And, you know, I've always been ambitious for Sheffield and for the residents of Sheffield. And I think this helps us to very much deliver upon our ambitions. And fundamentally, I think this from a people point of view is, I think a year ago, actually, you and I were here, actually, probably about a year ago, actually, now when I think about it. You and I came to committee a year ago to set our ambitions for discharge and we actually ended up in the news and the media around that, which was quite good. And one of the things that was really important at that time, we said we would do, is very much focus on enabling people to return home when they were well. And thinking about that from a point of view of not only individuals, but also family members and unpaid carers. And our commitment was to make the investments in the infrastructure and the supports to go and do that. And that's exactly what we've done. So it's nice to see a year on from that, that we're delivering upon that. And that's, this is where the kind of cultural shift, but also the kind of strategic, you know, approach that we're taking as a city is really important. And recently, we were nationally, you know, recognised for actually some of our good work, which I'm pleased to say. And I'm saying that in a really positive way in Sheffield. But around unpaid carers that came up is we made a commitment as part of that making discharge personal as our support to unpaid carers. Because for me, what's been really important, and I'm going to say this as somebody who's actually supported a person coming through hospital himself. You know, is actually that could be sometimes some of the most difficult time, actually, if you're a family member and unpaid carer. And because you're worried about what's going on and how's things going. And so what we've done is in parallel to our work, what we've also done is said, actually, how do we work alongside the carer centre and also, and colleagues across the Sheffield Teaching Hospital to actually think about how do we support unpaid carers? And actually, what we've done is actually worked with the carer centre and also Health Watch to look at patient experience. And that patient experience programme is helping us to continue to go and improve how we support particularly unpaid carers. And last week, actually, we did, we actually had some lunch events on the Carers Week. And we actually talked about very much is actually the passport that we're developing and to help identify more carers. But actually, also think about what supports that we could also give to carers upon discharge. And particularly that kind of, in some ways, it's that language, making the language very much more accessible for people. Particularly in a time of sometimes quite a lot of stress that's going on. So I think that that's been really important. And alongside that, you know, for us, I think we've got our carers' delivery plan that we've committed. We bring six monthly updates to committee and that very much is reflected upon that. So it's good. And I'm really pleased to see that actually what we've done in the last year, we've actually had about a 50% increase now in referrals in identification of carers. Which shows that, again, we're moving in the right trajectory and the right, you know, the right focus around that. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. Can we have the answer to, Councilwoman Dwyer, and then we need to wrap up.
Yeah, absolutely. So on the Care Transfer Hub, we were unsuccessful in appointment to that post, which is also a system post. So that is also being, that particular post is being hosted by the Teaching Hospital. But with a view that actually it could be hosted by the council if it was they personally. We have gone out for a secondment till the end of March to see if we can get some internal interest. And I am leaving straight after this to go and do those interviews. And we have applicants from both the council and the trust to consider this afternoon. So hopefully by the end of the day, we'll have somebody in post at the end of March. In terms of the wards that were selected, they were selected by the trust. I'm not sure what the rationale was, but that was the wards that I was handed with. But we're actually starting to look at what we need to do to think about scaling it up. We need to be a bit careful because there's lots of people doing discharge who are very anxious about what this might mean for me. We still lead lots of people to do discharge. It's some bits about conversations and culture and those things we need to change. So we will be thinking about how we scale that up, but we just need to do it mindful of those people in that space. In terms of the particular conversation on carers for hospital discharge. The Health and Care Act 2022 put a legal obligation on trusts to talk to people about their discharge plans and talk to carers about discharge plans. It's not rocket science, but hospitalists up and down the country aren't very good at doing that and they have an obligation to do it. From the Care Transfer Hub perspective, one of the things I've put on the proposal for what we might want to do when we start to think about them more generally is actually some specialist support around carers. And some of those are the areas that we identify we need. So we're looking at how we can build in some of that support for carers as part of that process and lose most of the carers in terms of what we're trying to capture for discharge planning.
Thank you. I am going to move us to the recommendations, which are on page 28. So there are three. The first one is the committee notes the current performance in relation to discharge and progress in delivering phase one of the hospital discharge and urgent care delivery plan. Number two agrees a six-month extension to the somewhere to access temporary care home beds. And number three requested the strategic director of adult health and wellbeing provides the committee with update on progress against the delivery plan in six months' time. Are members happy with that? Brilliant. Thank you ever so much. And we look forward to having you back telling us more and having more time maybe next time. Yeah. And we go on to item eight on the agenda, which is on page 45 of the pack, is the shared care record. I think Dominic is here to present. Thank you.
Good morning. Dominic Leith, Head of Service, Digital Innovation and ICT. This proposal is about the Yorkshire and Humber Shared Care Record. And the proposal is that we participate as a local authority. This is a national initiative and a regional project. Responsibility for delivering the shared care record is with the South Yorkshire Integrated Care Board. And Sheffield is a key participant. At the moment, we know individuals' data isn't shared consistently between the NHS and other organisations that play a role in health and social care. The Yorkshire and Humber Care Record is being developed to address that in order to share information in near real time. So that's information about health and care. The data that's shared will help us to improve individual care, speed up diagnoses and plan local services. It's important to note that we're committed as a local authority to keeping people's data safe, sharing it lawfully and securely and protecting confidentiality. And that's part of this project. We'll be working with a wide range of partners across South Yorkshire. This includes all four local authorities, all NHS trusts, GPs across the region and the Yorkshire ambulance service. The data that's shared is defined by the Public Records Standards Body. Individuals' data, practitioners' data, locations and organisations involved in care. The care record is underpinned by interweave technology, which is something which, as a local authority, we don't have experience of. It's an NHS-owned version of an open platform set of technologies. So therefore, we will require support and consultancy in order to implement this. The information that we share will come from the social care system Liquid Logic. And for our practitioners working with individuals, the shared care record will be accessed directly through Liquid Logic. So the way that works is that a practitioner will be in a care record. They click through directly into the interweave portal. It's launched with single sign-on, so there's no further authentication required. And it pulls up the individual's data from the shared care record. So that improves efficiency and also data security. The initial setup costs are estimated at £92,000 or up to £92,500. And it's anticipated that that will be covered by the ICB. We're undertaking work to confirm that and the governance around that. As I said before, we will require technical consultants in order to set that up. The cost to the council is likely to be around £10,000. There will be ongoing costs of up to £35,000 to support and maintain the virtual server and also for licensing. That will need to be covered under business planning. Once in place, the shared care record will help us to meet our care act responsibilities to promote health and care integration. It also supports our adult social care outcomes. It helps us to understand the needs of patients and people receiving service. And it also helps them to make the best decisions for their own wellbeing. An equality impact assessment is in place and that will be reviewed throughout the project. In terms of the legal implications, under the Care Act and the Children's Act, we have a legal justification for assembling and processing data in order to enable the delivery of services. As well as that, as well as the technical and practice work streams to the project, there will be an information governance work stream, which will make sure that we're compliant with all the relevant regulations. So in summary, this decision enables the council to participate in a regional and national programme that will benefit people receiving care and treatment in Sheffield, across South Yorkshire, across the region and eventually nationally.
Thanks, Dominic. And it fits in with what's happening regionally as well and nationally, obviously, is a real kind of key. Isn't it the data sharing? Are there any questions from colleagues? Councilwoman Dwyer?
Thank you. This feels like a really good piece of work. You said that the costs for setup would be anticipated to be covered by the ICB. And so this brings on a question of, if the programme costs go over, who is liable to pick up those costs?
So the costs which are included there are the maximum threshold for those costs. So I understand that if it was to go over that, then I'd need to come back for a further decision. There'd be consultation with the ICB. All indications are that the ICB would be likely to pick up those extra costs. But I don't anticipate that it will go up to that. In fact, we're looking at the ways in which we use the technology. I would expect it to come below that cost.
Thank you. Can I go on to the recommendations? They are on page 46. There's only one, it states that Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee approves the Sheffield City Council's participation in the shared care record at an estimated initial cost to the council of £10,000 and a cost of £35,000 per annum. Anonymous? Thank you. Thanks, Dominic.
Thank you very much.
And we move on to item nine, which is the Adult Future Options Commissioning Programme. This is on page sixty-one of the pack and we have Christine and Andrew presenting.
Uh, good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Thanks Chair. So I'm going to present the, this report to the committee this morning. Thank you for the invitation to, um, meet you again. Um, just to give an introduction, my intention is just to, to summarise and give the headlines because I think the report is reflective of a lot of work that's going on and evolving in, in this particular space in terms of, um, meeting the, the support needs of people with a lone disability in Sheffield. Um, so the report is seeking our approval for a commissioning strategy, um, uh, for an overarching, um, enhanced care framework, which would include lots for emergency overnight short breaks, enhanced care and accommodation and shared lives. I think it's fair to say that this is, um, a, a, a changing picture. Um, and since we last came to the committee last year to talk specifically about, um, emergency overnight short breaks, we've continued to, um, learn and gather more evidence and data about how we need to best meet the need of, of, um, the lone disability population in Sheffield. I'm also going to just give a summary of where we are in terms of the adult future options, um, the framework that we, we, for adults with disabilities in Sheffield and the enhanced supported living framework. So this proposal is underpinned by our lone disability strategy, Hear Our Voice, which was approved at committee, um, in November twenty twenty-three and was developed, as you'll remember, um, based on a, a, a very successful engagement, um, project and co-produced with individuals, carers and stakeholders. Um, it's, it's also set this proposal in, in the context of our legal duty under the care, section five of the Care Act, um, to ensure that we've got sufficiency and diversity in the market and the choice of high quality services, particularly for, for this group of individuals who often have very, um, complex support needs, um, which is for, for, from cradle to grave. Um, so our key next step is to further develop our offer in terms of emergency overnight short breaks, our shared life software replacements and specialist accommodation, which will include enhanced supported living and, um, residential care, which is of a specialist nature. So currently we've got two commissioning frameworks in place, um, uh, supporting people with a lone disability and/or autism, either in their home or other settings and in the community. The Adults with Disabilities Framework, um, has now been live for just over a year and the contract term is for seven years and that covers supported living, activities outside the home, which includes daytime services and overnight short breaks. We've also got an enhanced supported living framework, um, which went live last January and is due to expire in twenty twenty-seven and that replaced a regional enhanced supported living framework, um, which was jointly commissioned with South Yorkshire ICB. And on the expiry of that, we decided to, um, set up a, a local framework. Um, so that's for, for people that are over sixteen with a lone disability and/or autism with, um, behaviours that, of distress that may significantly challenge, um, themselves and the environment that they live in. Um, the enhanced supported living framework has enabled, um, eighteen Sheffield citizens with complex support needs to actually remain in Sheffield and to move away from looking at out of area placements. So there has been some degree of success, but as I mentioned, we now want to take those next steps and expand on these successes. Um, we have a, an enhanced supported living scheme in Sheffield, um, which was funded with, uh, NHS capital funding, which is, as we speak, um, this month will be, uh, full. Um, and that is achieving great outcomes for, for people with more enhanced supported living needs. Um, we also have, um, a very successful scheme for five young people with very complex autism, uh, behaviours of distress, um, which, uh, again, with NHS capital funding, um, has, has now been up and running for a year and we're already seeing amazing progress for some of those young people who are now looking at moving on to more independent living. Um, the, these frameworks have, as I, as I say, as they've been implemented and we're working with them and they're evolving, we've identified that there, there is still a need for an enhanced care framework. So to enable us to develop, um, emergency overnight short breaks, uh, shared lives and more enhanced care with accommodation and include residential care as well as supportive living. Um, underpinning this, we, we have got a, a South Yorkshire Regional Market Position Statement, which is identified that on average Sheffield requires twenty-one new supported living units each year over the next ten years. Um, we are also, what we're factoring in is the number of people that we still, Sheffield people that we still know are out of area. Um, we have a hundred and ninety-five people currently placed out of the city of Sheffield, although it has, has to be said that a number of those are, the, the vast majority is still in the South Yorkshire region. Um, but we want to enable people to have that choice, to be able to move back to their hometown. Um, and we recognise that we need to expand on the, um, offer that we currently have. People are placed out of area for, for several region reasons. Um, that would include emergency placements where we haven't got, uh, vacancies in city, but sometimes it has been because we haven't had the expertise currently in city. We want to, um, uh, uh, bridge that gap. Um, we're currently doing a, a deep dive on the data that we have and we're, um, updating that data in real time in terms of the out of area placements and that will inform our commissioning strategy moving forward. I just wanted to mention as well in terms of, uh, regional initiatives that are in, 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 in train, um, we are currently out tender for a safe space provision in the South Yorkshire region and that will, um, provide three units, um, for people with very specialist support needs to have an intensive, um, period of work in a safe space, um, uh, and work with people in their circle of support and a clinical team to enable them to move on after the period of crisis has ended. Um, that is out tender, uh, currently. We also have plans in, in place, um, for developing com, accommodation in city. Um, we have an accommodation with care pipeline, um, which we're looking at over the next two-year period. And again, it, it's a, a rapidly changing picture, um, which is looking very positive. Um, we're, we've developed, um, a, an analysis tool to look at developers' proposals in line with CQC recommendations of right support, um, and with some success. So we have quite a healthy looking pipeline, um, which again will hopefully enable us to meet our targets that have been set in South Yorkshire, um, market position statements of twenty-one units per year. Um, I don't know if you wanted to add something about shared lives? Andrew there as well?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the sha- shared lives has been a, one of our successful services that we offer and we've offered for a long time. Uh, I think I've sent reports or spoken to yourself, Andrew and other ca- cabinet members recently about where we've changed things considerably and enhanced quality of life for people in particular. There, there was, um, there were plenty of young children with a disability that were in foster placements and had a learning disability or a physical disability. And in previous years, those people had come into adulthood and probably had gone into residential care settings or, um, supportive living schemes. But over the last four or five years, we've taken a lead in preventing that wherever we possibly can. It's a very person centred approach. Uh, I wouldn't like to give the exact number because it's consistently changing, but there are tens and tens of people who no longer have to go into residential care or supportive living and stay within the family that, where they've, where they've grown up. And that's at a foster placement has now become a shared lives placement. And we've probably got some of the best approaches to shared lives in the entire country. This is not just a local regionalised thing. Shared lives is a national service obviously, but we've been looked at about how we've done that and what, where we're getting to. And it's encouraged complex needs to be able to stay into one place by support from health colleagues and the community learning disability team, et cetera. Shared lives is an extremely difficult area to grow. Much as in children's services with foster placements, it's a strong challenge. Sometimes it's extremely hard work and no rewards. Other times it's quite rewarding and quite supportive. Uh, but we, we are taking a lot more complexity of need and I think there's the challenge. But we've got a recruitment drive, a continual recruitment drive with South Yorkshire at the moment about shared lives. We're not standing alone in this. We're standing across South Yorkshire and it's starting to show some really, really good re, uh, good results. Uh, we have services that we can be very proud of as a council that you've supported in the past. And I think shared lives is one of those. For any of you who don't know, we're more than happy to put some display on. I think we've done so previously, uh, down the road, we've put some events on. And if you can get the capture of the feel here, it is an extremely well-run service that gives the alternative to an improving supportive living and residential offer. That's, that's absolutely clear. But we're also using tech care and there are no paws in the building at the moment. We're using tech care to support those placements with a much more enhanced approach and positive outcomes. Where before people would have definitely gone into residential placements. That's not the case any longer. So it's a big challenge to us to keep that going, but it's heading in the right direction at a good speed. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to continue by touching on, um, emergency overnight short breaks. As I mentioned, um, we, we did come to committee last December and, um, just as a further update, since then we have done a soft market test with our, uh, short breaks providers and our enhanced supportive living providers. And it's fair to say that there is little appetite, um, for further development, but it's, as, as we mentioned before, this needs to be a multifaceted approach in, in terms of improving the emergency overnight short breaks offer. Um, we know that the greatest unmet need is in the eighteen to twenty-five, uh, year old age group. So working with our colleagues in, in the transitions team, social work colleagues, um, to be able to project and predict, um, the needs of people, uh, in the future. Um, given the unmet need, we have developed our in-house provision, um, with success. Shared lives is, is another option that we are, are, um, considering. Um, there are further developments, um, due to launch this year, working with two of our framework providers, although they won't, um, be offering emergency overnight short breaks. It is further developing our overall offer so that it, it hopefully frees up some capacity for the in-house provision. We're also negotiating with two residential care providers, um, to potentially look at block funding, some beds for emergency overnight short breaks. But it, it comes with its own complexities because the, the, the people that we are talking about here have very enhanced level of support needs. Um, so it, it's not just a, a local issue, but regionally and nationally it poses its own challenges. Not so much in terms of the support, but the accommodation, um, that is available to support people in, in a safe setting. Um, so i- in terms of the, um, commissioning strategy, the, the proposal is to establish an enhanced care framework, which would include lots in the similar, um, model to what we've got with the Adults with Disabilities Framework for shared lives, carers, emergency overnight short breaks and what we're calling accommodation with care because that would include, um, uh, specialist accommodation, either in a supportive living or residential setting. Um, in terms of engagement and co-production, we have got a working group, um, which has been run very successfully and that's, um, reporting back and accountable to the Learn Disability Partnership Board. Um, and they are looking at developing a, a specialist accommodation plan. Um, that the plan is to, for the specialist accommodation plan to come to approval by committee in September this year. Um, so yes, so that's, um, the, the headlines that I wanted to really go through today. Um, so it's to seek approval for our commissioning strategy.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you for like really comprehensive actually, um, presentation. Uh, so we go to the recommendations that are on page sixty-two of the, the pack. Uh, and the recommendation, uh, recommendations are as follow. Uh, the committee notes the progress in implementing the adult future option working age framework. Approves the proposal to develop an, an enhanced care and accommodation framework to ensure sufficiency of provision for emergency overnight short breaks, supporting living and shared lives in the city and requests that the strategic director of adult care and wellbeing provides the committee with an update on progress against the future option delivery programme in six months. Are colleagues happy to approve those? Brilliant. Thank you so much.
Can I just thank everybody again? I, I know we've been here several times, but it's really pleasant to see that you're supporting where we're trying to get to. And I know that a lot of you've got personal interests in this area. So it's really valuable to us that we feed this back and we do. So thank you.
Thanks Andrew. Uh, we're going on to item ele, uh, item ten, care governance and performance framework update. And I believe Liam is presenting on this. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. Liam Duggan, Assistant Director, Care Governance, Financial Inclusion. So we're here with the, um, the update to the care governance strategy, performance management framework and the cycle of assurance. So the, the care governance strategy, um, all three documents have been reviewed and updated for twenty twenty-four. Firstly, the care governance strategy, which is overarching, uh, strategy for adult care and wellbeing, um, care governance was approved by committee, um, in June two years ago. Um, its purpose is to provide a comprehensive framework of assurance and accountability for all aspects of adult care and wellbeing. We've made some changes to the framework this, um, this year. Um, making, making the framework more robust and more consistent across each of its five domains, um, by bringing in the, the cycle of improvement into each, into each domain and describing how each of those, uh, parts of the improvement cycle, um, will operate in those different, in those different contexts. And what we'll see i- in future iterations of the strategy is that, um, that cycle develop out. So we'll be getting more and more prescriptive about how we expect, um, the go, the governance process to operate, um, in each of those five domains. Um, we've made a, a significant update to the statutory regulatory compliance domain, um, so that it describes in more detail how we will give oversight to the Directorate's Care Act, um, responsibilities through alignment with, um, the new local authority information return, which has emerged over the last twelve months and, um, the ADAS getting ready for assurance checklist, which we've also been working to. Um, the, um, the updated care governance strategy is at appendix one. The performance management frameworks, it's in, within the, the, the care governance strategy and framework, um, and it aligns with our adult social care strategy, um, and our local and national outcome measures. The performance framework has been redrafted. Um, we've tried to reduce and simplify it so that it more clearly articulates the, the, the process of, of improvement through each of the parts of the improvement cycle. Um, some of the changes are to incorporate and reference the council's, um, performance framework and new council plan. Um, and we're also going to a little bit more information about the performance dashboards and outcome indicators. And we've also updated the cycle of assurance with some very minor changes so that it And we've also updated the cycle of assurance with some very minor changes so that it remains current for 2024-25. And that's the last item. Any questions?
Are there any questions? We, Councilor Meele, listen.
Thank you, Jo. I just want to make a very brief comment because I'm a bit parroting myself, but just to say how very glad I am to see, I'm sure everyone is, to see the emphasis on whole workforce involvement in continuous improvement. Said it before, we've all said it before, I just wanted to underline that for the record, that I think it's really vital, it's so good to see it running throughout the whole governance system. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we had a really long conversation in one of the briefings, lots of the tweaks to the reports before they come to here, and they happen across parties, so thank you for all the work on this. So the recommendations for members are on page seventy-seven. So the Adult Health and Social Care Committee, we are asked to approve the updated Care Governance Strategy, approve the updated Performance Management Framework, and approve the updated Cycle of Assurance. Are members happy with that? Brilliant, thanks, Liam. And we can go on to item eleven, which is the Adult Care and Wellbeing Budget Risk Management and Financial Governance, and I think Jonathan is presenting this one.
Morning, everyone. I'm Jonathan McKenna-Moore, I'm the Service Manager for Business Planning and Governance, and I'm here today with the quarterly update on the budget, but this is also an annual report that we do every June that is to explain the constituent parts of the Adult Social Care Budget. So that's both the income, which you'll see broken down in Table One, and then how that spend is distributed, which is in Tables Three and Four. There's some additional explanation of how that spend on services is reduced by income and how that varies across the different service types, and that's explained in Table Five. Our last report was at the end of the last financial year, so there's an update on the final outturn for adult social care, which was a 3.1 million overspend, which is the best outturn we've had for a number of years, there's a bit of a history there of the last few years since Covid and the increased costs we saw as the impact on that, so it's returning to a stronger financial position there. As we've described to committee in previous reports, a lot of the new income that made that outturn possible has now been absorbed by inflationary costs and demand pressures. So there was, that has an impact on this financial year. So Table Six summarises the planned savings that were all approved through council for this year, and as you can see, this mainly relates to that income transferring into the permanent budget. Alongside that, we have a recovery plan to address the 17 million pound pressure that's been carried forward, and there's a summary of the activity that's underway across our services in order to deliver that by the end of March next year. Section 1.5 gives some more detail on the Better Care Fund that is referenced as one of the lines in the income, and Table Seven sets out the different parts of the BCF. And you'll notice the majority of that is actually a nominal amount from both the council and the NHS. So while things like disabled facilities grant and discharge grant are specific sums of money that come into the council, the majority of the Better Care Fund is actually nominal amounts that are monies that we both spend that meet the requirements of the Better Care Fund, so it's not additional income, it's just describing how that money is spent under that remit. And then finally, there's a recap on our plans for governance improvements that links to the plans that we brought previously to committee and the items that are due for delivery this month, most of which are contained within the paper itself. And then last item is a schedule of reporting for the year ahead. Any questions?
Thanks, Jonathan. Are there any questions from members? Thank you. It's a really, really clear report, I think we all kind of got used to the reports, and it's very interesting, and obviously we have challenges ahead, but it's like we are preparing for the challenges, and I look forward to seeing the schedule when we're looking, you know, the recovery plans. And Alexis, do you want to come in?
Yeah, I just want to say just a thank you to Jonathan and the team for all the work around budgets. I think it's been a miraculous, you know, work over the last few years. I also just want to note for committees that we will also rescind the recommendation, has any other recommendations as well at the end?
Yes, on the recommendations, which are on page one hundred and fourteen, the last bullet point I suggested in pre-meeting that we take out because it just slipped in from notes, I think, because it's a vague recommendation, we can't really agree to that. But it's one of those that nobody knows how it's got on there. So the recommendations on page one hundred and fourteen are as follow. The committee note the update to the financial forecast for the delivery of savings into 2024-25, note the outturn position for 23-24, note the overview of adult care budget and current user resources, note the user resources delivery plan update, note the schedule of reporting 24-25 aligned to financial regulations, request updates on progress with implementation throughout budget delivery reports for future committees. Are we all happy with those? Thank you. So Rachel, we're taking the last one. Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And the team. We move on to item twelve, the DAS and Strategy Delivery Update. And we have Rebecca and Andrew.
So I'm Rebecca Dixon, I'm the Service Manager for Care Governance and Improvement, and this report is the DAS and Strategy Delivery Update, so I'm just going to run through and give you the key highlights from that. This report is scheduled as part of our Performance and Governance Framework. We last presented this at committee in March. This one will provide an update on our preparation for CQC and our self-assessment, and also demonstrate how impact is being measured in enabling citizens to live the life they want to live. Our focus continues to be on the delivery of outcomes and working in genuine partnership, and very much underpinning this is a culture of proactive performance management and assurance. Our improvement journey is evidence-based and informed by the voices of people who use services, their families, and those who experience alongside our workforce and partners. So highlights for the last quarter include a quality assurance process for adults with a disability and a refreshed joint health and care quality assurance framework for residential care, a co-designed programme for Carers Week, which is a number of events for citizens and professionals to learn more about the support available and network, et cetera. Transition to the new care and wellbeing service, which will improve our home care provision and help to provide flexible care based on people's individual needs. And we had a health, adult care and wellbeing conference in May, which was citywide for colleagues and partners, which focused on safeguarding, including domestic and financial abuse. In terms of the partnership and strategy delivery programme, to embed our commitment to partnership and collaboration, we're further developing the partnership board, and as part of the last quarter, we had two system-wide workshops in April reflecting on what works well already and where we can strengthen our approaches to collaboration. Over the next twelve months, there'll be more workshops to harness opportunities for collaboration focused on a disability-friendly city, our climate goals, quality of care, early help and prevention, living and ageing well, and safeguarding. In terms of CQC, CQC are now publishing the local authorities they're due to assess. We're still on standby, so we're not on that list just yet. So same timeframe, we'll receive the notification and have three weeks to return the local area information return and the self-assessment, and then a six-to-eight week timeframe after that three weeks to prepare for the assessment visit. So we're looking post-summer, which is good, I think, because logistically trying to organise lots of interviews and visits and things over the summer when there's obviously more annual leaving things would have been a bit of a nightmare. In terms of the self-assessment, that's been out for consultation, and we've been doing lots of work with the workforce and teams to really get people's views and input on the self-assessment. That's currently being refreshed. Fundamentally, it's the same in terms of the strengths and challenges identified, but obviously it's updated with the data, and there's a much bigger focus on the I-statements because we really want to embed that commitment that people are at the heart of what we do. Over the next few months, we'll submit the self-assessment to committee, the council's leadership team, and other partnerships for agreement as part of demonstrating our local commitment to its content and delivery focus. In terms of horizon scanning, the Department of Health and Social Care are planning to publish waiting times for adult social care assessments and services broken down into service types, so community, residential, nursing. This comes after ADAS surveys recording four hundred to five hundred thousand people waiting for an assessment, review of direct payment care package at any one time, and also showed a doubling in waiting six months for assessments from forty-one thousand to eighty-five thousand. In terms of our approach, we've presented previously to committee around waiting times, and we're really focused on developing and building our understanding of why people are waiting and social care's role within that, and how we can enable those waiting times to reduce. Just a quick overview of performance highlights, we have new measures now as part of our dashboard for SCAS, the Social Care Account Service, to measure the impact on access to support alongside transparency and fairness in adult social care charging. Our Individual Carer Satisfaction Engagement User Survey results are back in, so we sent 1,861 and received 500 responses, which is a good response rate to actually have tangible measures from that. Six measures have improved, two remain the same, and combined with our recent carer's survey and I-statements, that really shows a continued improvement, bringing us closer to our comparators, which is positive in terms of satisfaction and engagement. In adult performance, the target operating model has been successful in restructuring social work teams into specialisms, and a number of highlights there, safeguarding contact screen within one day are up to seventy-two percent in May this year compared to fifty-one percent in March this year. In some areas, there's been a change in trajectory, and that includes median days to complete S42 safeguardings, number of DOLs awaiting allocation, and median number of days to put support in place. We've got clear improvement plans around those, we have comprehensive and evidence-based understanding for changes, why things have changed, and we've completed that work. It's largely around things like increased demand and recruitment and retention of staff, increased acuity of individuals' needs, and the number of people presenting at front doors such as A and E, GPs and First Contact, and also the impact of the timeliness of our case management system, which does actually skew some of these figures sometimes, so people can appear they're waiting when they're not actually waiting. As I said, we've got clear improvement plans in place to address these challenges alongside increasing our resilience. Obviously, we had the hospital discharge paper earlier in this committee, and there'll be further committee papers on safeguarding and DOLs coming forward. So I'm going to pass down to Andrew to talk about complaints.
Yeah, thank you. So Andrew Drummond, Service Manager for Safeguarding Quality Assurance, and I'm just going to give an overview on complaints and update. So with complaints, we continue to have a really proactive approach, learning from complaints and embedding that into our improvements. We're at the lowest level of open complaints in several years, which I think really evidences why we're resolving things early on, speaking to the person or their representative, which shows a clear improvement. One of the things that we've done since we last came to committee to discuss complaints in January earlier this year is we've built a complaints delivery plan, which we'll be bringing later in the year to really evidence that journey and to evidence CQC where we learn from, learning from what we need to improve on in relation to complaints. We're awaiting the corporate report on complaints, and that'll be embedded into the next time we come and talk about complaints, which will be later into the year, early next year, in six months' time, and we'll be able to give wider information at that point.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the report. Are there any questions in terms of any of the items presented? Thank you. Brilliant. So the recommendations are on page one hundred and twenty-six. It is recommended that the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee notes the progress in delivering upon the adult care strategy, living the life you want to live, notes the strategy delivery programme at Appendix One, notes the adult care and wellbeing performance, notes adult care and wellbeing update in relation to complaints and compliments, and notes the progress in consultation and engagement on the CQC self-assessment and our preparations. Are members happy with those? Brilliant, thank you. And we move on to item thirteen, which is on page one hundred and forty-three of your PAC, and Catherine and Paul presenting.
Hi, I'm Catherine Bunton, and I'm the Assistant Director for Commissioning and Partnerships.
And I'm Paul Higginbottom, the Strategic Commissioning Manager.
So thanks for having us here today. The report provides committee with an update on the care and wellbeing service for the provision of home care in the city, and that's summarised in Sections one to three. It also seeks approval from committee for our commissioning intentions for the provision of home care alongside this contract, and the rationale for that is set out in Section Four. Within Section Three, and at 3.6, the report notes how the development of technology-enabled care is critical and central to our vision for home care in the city, so we're seeking committee's approval to commission a technical monitoring system as part of this report also. In brief summary, the care and wellbeing service contract is a significant change in the way that the council provides and delivers home care for people. We'll be working with fourteen providers across sixteen contract areas in a collaborative way to improve the quality and the consistency of care, and that's about moving from a framework arrangement where providers can be in competition and the process and our capacity is focused on process and brokerage, and we're moving that to spending our time and providers' time working in partnership to improve people's experiences of care and their outcomes. In the first month of June, first week of June, just a couple of weeks ago, we saw about 2,000 people see their care provider change, and that was managed through hard work and commitment of our commissioning teams, our social work teams, and the providers themselves, where we took a really person-centred approach to having lots of conversations with people and their carers and their families and providers to make sure that they knew what was happening, and where we're making decisions based on their needs and their preferences. There's lots, yeah, there's lots of detail in the report, but we're happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Obviously, we've had updates regularly of the whole process, and I assume that after the PERP period, people will be more kind of at ease asking specific questions, so probably we'll have an update later, maybe in September, like to do like a quarterly report on this. Oh, sorry, Councilor, please.
I was just, not so much a question, but just a comment, because obviously, like you say, we're under PERP at the moment, but I think it's important to acknowledge the mad work that an officer time has gone into this in the last few months to make sure this is a smoother transition for people in our city, and we can acknowledge that today, that, and say thank you, really.
Councilor Dwyer, is that okay? Yes, thank you very much, but we'll do it more formally with the details later when we have a bit more data. But I just wanted to comment on the fact that the fact that the providers have changed, it doesn't mean that the staff have changed, because the staff have all been tuppied over the other day, so it means people are not actually necessarily changing who's providing the care for them, it's just that the providers... It's just that the provider is different. It's just I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, there were approximately nine hundred to a thousand staff transferred into Tupi. So we're in a bad and down phase with the new contracts. But there were an awful lot of new recruits as well. There's been some very helpful recruitment pipelines, more people on foot. So I think that's a really positive change Sheffield as well.
Thank you. So the recommendations are on page one hundred and forty three and one hundred and forty four. So, sorry, they are on page one hundred and forty four. It is recommended that the Adult Health and Social Care Committee notes the outcome of the tender for the Sheffield's Care and Wellbeing Service Contracts and mobilisation in transition to the service, which went live on the third of June twenty twenty four. Approves the commissioning of home care provision to run alongside the care and wellbeing service contract and to note that a tender process will follow. This will enable the council to procure individual packages of home care and people living in Sheffield and in case our provider exit tender for a case and wellbeing patch in timely way. And approves the commissioning of twelve-month contract with the option to extend for an additional twelve months for the provision of twenty four seven tech monitoring services and to note that the tender process will follow. And to further note, this will allow the necessary time to commission our tech service delivery model, which will be implemented subject to approval on Monday, on Monday eighth of September twenty twenty five. Are we all happy with those? Brilliant. Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. And we're moving on to item fourteen, which is providing support market sustainability and commissioning plan update, which is still Catherine and Paul.
Yeah, thanks. It's still me. So this report is part of the regular updates that the Commissioning and Partnership Service bring to committee. There's seven recommendations within the report that sort of fall into the categories of noting the progress we made, asking for committee's approval of our priorities for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six, and one approval for a P A sleeping rate. Section two point two notes the work that's ongoing to provide and update our market position statement so that we're clear with current and potential providers of social care in the city, what needs we have, what our values are and how we think the next five to ten years will look in terms of commissioning. Section two point three and appendix one provides assurance to committee that previous decisions made over the course of the last two years have been implemented. And that provides assurance to the public as well, so it summarizes what we've done following all of your approvals. Thank you for those. Section two point four and appendix two is updated commissioning priorities. We did bring that last time, but since then we've had some workshops and further engagement. So we keep those reviewed and as up to date as possible. Section two point five is a summary of our Adult Future Options Commissioning Programme, which Christine and Andrew already presented. And two point six is an update of our Living and Aging Well Commissioning Programme. And that's due to come in September with more detail and specific recommendations there. And then finally, section three notes our wider approach to ensuring that our provision of care in the city is of a high quality. And that includes the request to approve a sleeping rate for PAs connected to our personalisation agenda. And then just a note really to apologize that there is no section four. And the report jumps straight to question five, which is just a numbering issue during report writing.
Thank you. Catherine, would you just mind explaining why we are suggesting the sleeping rate for personal assistants? Just for people out there that don't know, so we make a lot of assumptions, but it's just to clarify why we're doing that.
Yes, certainly. So this is, so it aligns actually with the sleeping rate that we have around supported living as well. So people who are employed by people with personal budgets provide care aligned to their own support plans. And some people will have care that requires their PAs to be awake at night. And that has a rate attached to it, and other people just need somebody in the house, but they're able to sleep. And so there's a court ruling that allows us to set specific rates around that, and that's what we're asking for. And it also helps to empower people actually who have personal budgets to act as employers and to use their budgets to their best outcomes.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, so the seven recommendations, sorry, cancel Dwyer.
Sorry, can you just explain, so is the, a sleeping rate paid? Is that the amount we're paying to, for a service, to providers or to the PAs directly? Or is it to the?
So this is the rate that, yeah, sorry, apologies. This is the rate that a personal assistant who would be employed by somebody who receives a personal budget would get for providing a sleeping service. So it's down to seventy seven pound ninety five, and they would get that through their, through their employment with the person that has a personal budget. Yeah.
Am I able to just, because it noted that some, one of the risks is that reputational damage. But does this mirror what other local authorities are doing, particularly close by ones? Because obviously, it's not too far if you want, if you were a P A to move to Rotherham for work.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, it does mirror a pattern across lots of local authorities. I would have to go back and double check, which I will do, and I'll come back to committee on exactly what our neighbouring authorities would do. But it is as well, it aligns with, as I said, what we're doing with our Adult Future Options Commissioning Strategy and the rates for supported living as well, so it brings equity there.
Thank you. So the recommendations are on page one hundred and ninety, and there are seven. So the first one is note the outcome of the commissioning strategy, decisions made at committee and progress with delivery of commissioning priority in appendix one. Approve other commissioning priorities for twenty twenty four, twenty six at appendix two. Approve the sleeping rate for personal assistants of seventy seven pounds ninety five. Note the development of a living and aging well market position statement and programme to bring together the whole commissioning and delivery programmes relating to living and aging well into one programme, inclusive of the care and wellbeing services, service development. Note the work and the way as part of the adult market priority position statement to market shape and stimulate a diverse range of highly quality services, both in terms of the types, volumes and qualities of services and the types and provider organisation to ensure the market remains vibrant and sustainable. Number six, note how quality assurance will be assured in commissioned and in-house provision and priorities for twenty four, twenty five, including review and design of brokerage services and contracts to ensure quality outcomes and safeguarding outcomes are met. And finally, request that the Strategic Director of Adult Care and Wellbeing continues to bring regular updates to the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. And can I suggest that we have the first one in six months' time? And then we decide, could we, can we say in six months' time for number seven? Are people happy? Yeah. Are people happy with that? And then if it's too often, we can then change, but at least if we have a six, because we've got the new providers in, it would be good to see how it's going in six months' time. Are members happy to approve those? Brilliant. Thank you so much. And we move on to the final item, which is item fifteen, twenty twenty three, twenty four, final outturn position. This is on page two hundred and thirteen. And we have Jane presenting this item. This is the same item that will go to all policy committees, so it's from the finance people.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Willby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. So the purpose of the paper is to give the final outturn position for twenty three, twenty four. As the Chair quite rightly says, the full position is presented to the Finance Committee, which is later this afternoon. It's also worth noting that the position is included in the annual statement of accounts for twenty three, twenty four, and a draft of which was submitted in line with statutory deadlines for the thirty first of May and is published on the council's website. We are proud to be part of the forty one percent of councils nationally to hit the deadline for a consecutive year. So noting that for my former audit committee members, which I can see a few over on the room. So overall, the council did spend fifteen point seven, sorry, fifteen point six million over against a net revenue budget of four hundred and ninety seven million, which was a variance of three point one percent. So between the quarters, the early quarter one forecast indicated a seventeen point six million overspend, which improved by two million throughout the year. The relative stability in the forecast, which is shown in chart one point three, shows a good commitment of council officers to financial management and some realistic estimates of service costs. The improvement was largely due to corporate underspends through sustained improvements on our interest income from treasury investments. And this did provide six million pounds of mitigations for our increasing unfunded overspends. The challenging underlying budget issues remain for the council in children's services, S E N transport, adults' care and wellbeing and homelessness services. Children's services have been faced with increasing costs of external residential placements through persistent demand for S E N home-to-school transport. The homelessness situation arisen due to the hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation being used to support our homelessness duties where a shortage of affordable housing in the city has pushed families and single people to crisis point. Government legislation around housing benefit rules means that the council is subsidising the cost of the provision without funding or available budget, leading to an overspend of eight point four million between temporary and supported accommodation last year. The Adults Health and Social Care Committee overspent by two point seven million against a net revenue budget of a hundred and fifty five million, which is less than a two percent variance. And whilst it's still in overspend position, is better than we have seen for recent years, as noted earlier. As you've heard throughout the year, the service budgets have been continued to be challenged by the high-cost packages of care and fundamentally an underlying issue in learning disabilities, purchasing budgets and overspends in staffing across the service. As Jonathan mentioned in his earlier update, the position has been somewhat offset through one-off funding in the year. There was over six million from the Adult Social Care Grant, additional funding from Discharge and Market Sustainability Fund. Table in one point eight point one breaks down the overspend into one-off items, budget implementation plans that are not delivering and underlying trend issues. And it highlights the underlying issue of a ten point five million overspend in committee budgets, mitigated by eleven point three one-off funding received in the year that mitigated that position. It's also, also worth noting that the outturn position assumes a carryforward of twenty three, twenty four budgets of almost nine hundred thousand in respect of commitments made to care providers in the city for workforce funding and support as part of the Market Sustainability Investment Funding Grant. The process of agreeing those carryforwards is via the Finance Committee and will happen this afternoon. The biggest risk and challenge to the committee budgets is the seventeen million recovery plan. Without the certainty on the funding to offset these underlying issues, the service is carrying a significant budget overspend into twenty four, twenty five. The council did put in place forty seven million pounds of budget savings last year, of which seventy eight percent were delivered within the year. The six point five million were deemed undeliverable and will present a risk to budgets in twenty four, twenty five alongside underlying budget challenges of twenty six point seven million, of which the adults are carrying quite a large amount of that. One-off grant incomes has mitigated, as we've said. But in order to be sustainable going forwards, the majority of the issues do span the three overspending areas, adults, children's and homelessness. The issues that we face are not unique to Sheffield and councils across the country are experiencing similar challenges and the financial context of uncertainty over future funding streams. We've been able to manage our overspends by drawing from reserves for the past three years. And table one point five shows you the seventy million pounds worth of reserves that we've drawn from to manage our budget contingency risk, which leaves us twenty seven point six to manage our overspends into twenty four, twenty five. We're currently in the process of refreshing our medium-term financial analysis and will begin to set a balanced budget for twenty five, twenty six. Pressures on services from increased demand, inflating cost bases and reductions on funding on top of undelivered savings with underlying budget gaps will make the process even more difficult this year as that gap continues to widen. So the paper is just to note the financial position for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Remember, we're in PERP. I think we would have plenty of comments, but we are going to do it later on. And thank you for all the hard work on this. I know that it's not easy. So the recommendations are on page, it's only one, on page two hundred and thirteen. The committee is recommended to note the update information and management actions on the twenty three, twenty four revenue budget outturn as described in this report. Are we all happy with that? Brilliant. And this concludes the meeting for today. The next meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee will be held on Wednesday, eighteenth of September, at ten a.m. Thank you, everybody.